The Wiregrass Farmer, Turner County's newspaper. We do more than tell you the news. We explain to you what the news means. We tell you how it's going to affect you and what you should expect. You can watch our videos for free, but if you want in-depth analysis, The Wiregrass Farmer subscriptions are only $31 a year in Turner County. You can get that $31 subscription anywhere in the world with our online subscription service. Just visit www.wiregrassfarmer.com. Ashburn City Council Meeting, Ashburn City Council Meeting, June 1st, 2023. Meeting will begin in just a few moments. Tonight's agenda. If I went too fast on that, all you have to do is pause the video. June 1st.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being with us tonight for June 1st Council Meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. I have a suggestion of Councilmember Smith, and I think it's a lovely suggestion. We're going to begin our meetings from now on with a moment of silence, remembering citizens of Ashburn and Turner County that we have lost in the past month. So please stand. We will have a moment of silence, an invitation, and a special moment.
And we bow head for a moment of grace. Heavenly Father, we come once again from this school court here in Ashburn, Georgia. Thank you for saving church and grace to this council meeting, and we're asking you for saving church and grace back to our saviors. Lord, let this be the power to see that I said I'll make the best decisions for the city of Ashburn as well as the citizens of Ashburn. Lord, we want to ask you to stop letting the big corporations pass by us and stop by for a while because we need to draw this, and we have the train in the interstate that's here. Heavenly Father, we thank you once again. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, whom I have saved from America, and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First yield, we have our call. Secretary Rockwell, Secretary Smith, Secretary James.
Present.
Secretary Jordan.
Present.
Secretary Darkness.
Present.
Mayor Longham.
Present. Please let the record show that our city attorney, Mr. Ariel Martin, is also in attendance. First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the May 4th regular city council meeting and the May 16th called city council meeting. I have a motion.
I'd like to say, sir, on the May 16th call meeting. Oh, we had it back on the gym to which kind.
I'm sorry, Mr. Burgess, I can't hear you.
On the May 16th meeting. Oh, we had it back on the gym.
For why? What reason, please?
I think the May 16th meeting was a special call meeting for the recognition, recognition of clear of that.
Yes, yes.
I made a motion.
A second.
The motion is what, please?
For the May 4th and May 16th meeting.
I have a motion and a second to approve the May 4th and the May 16th called council meeting. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next two items on the agenda, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Sean Hampton of Watkins and Associates, our engineering company. We have bid opening for the sewer project and the automated, automated meter reading project. If, Mr. Hampton, if you will address this item one by one, please.
Yes. I think the first one on the agenda was the sewer project. On May 9th, we opened bids on the CDVT project for the city, which is a sewer rehabilitation project. We had four bidders. Gulf Coast Underground was the low bidder with a base bid of $1 million, The city has a million dollar grant from the Department of Community Affairs, and they also have a million and a half dollars of money through an ARCA grant for sewer rehab. So there's nothing needed to do the project. We recommend that the city enter into an agreement with Gulf Coast Underground in a map with their bid contingent upon DCA terms. And this CDVT area is the West End there, part of Jefferson Street, part of Washington Avenue, Erickson Avenue, West Blom Road, and a little bit on South Bluey Street.
So the grant that you signed at 1.6, you said with the.
You have two, you have two funding sources. One is a grant through the Department of Community Affairs for a million dollars.
Right.
The other is a, you got a grant from the state of Georgia from the Office of Planning and Budget, ARCA funds for a million, I think it's 1.5 billion for sewer rehab. It's earmarked spiritually for sewer rehab.
When we get there?
Your, your debt? You have to go.
So if we didn't want to use the ARCA funds, do we work the bid to be up on the one video?
Yes. You, you, the way it's, the way this project is set up, first process is to go out and video all the sewer lines and determine exactly what type of repairs need to be done. So we did building items that added up to 1.2 million dollars and some change, but based on the actual sewer videos, we may not have to do that many repairs. So it's possible that we could just do a million dollar project and use that ARCA money for sewer rehab and other locations. The first step is to have all the sewer lines videoed, which will determine where all the problem areas are, and then we can bid out. We have pay items that will tell the contractor, you need to work this area, this area, do this, and we can control the dollar amount on how much it spends.
So if we enter this agreement and we state, like, we don't want to go over $1 million, but we've got to stay up on that, understand that?
We would stay in that general range, that's correct. And I can, you can look contingent upon, I think the grant is actually, I think it's $1 million.
$200?
Maybe $200? I mean, you could, you could award it contingent upon the initial contract amount to, to a million dollars.
But only add, don't the city have to put up the money up front first? To do all this?
You, you have a hundred thousand dollar match is what the city is obligated for. So the city's obligated for a hundred thousand dollars match. They get a million dollars from DCA, so. But we can work within a budget that the city determines. Now, if, for this particular project, you only can work in that one target area on that side of town, there's a predetermined boundary that you have to do all the work.
I understand that I'm trying to get, we got to put money up first, like the hundred thousand dollars, on the million dollars, that hit on the million dollars.
In two years, within two years, you'll pay that money? Yes.
Mr. Hampton, how do we know for sure how many households this will impact? It's a pretty wide area. I think it's going to impact several.
We have 66 homes that this will impact.
Thank you.
Sir, didn't we, didn't we do that before? We might not Detroit Street and Moore Street, you shot like an inside line and camera down through there?
You, you, the, over the years, you, there's been several sewer rehab projects throughout the city. This is a continuation of sewer rehab projects.
So it's not going over none of the same places that we already been?
No, no.
On West End area, what, what is it, prevent them from flooding their home?
No.
It's sewer re, sewer rehabilitation. It is to rehab the sewer lines, to prevent the wastewater plant from flooding and sewage from spilling into creeks. EPD is very concerned about overflows in the city, and they're, they're pushing the city to do sewer rehab projects to give some of that under control.
Are there further questions or comments on this particular project? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve this project.
I'm sorry. So I would reflect if you didn't enter an agreement, how would that affect that grant that we're receiving?
You lose, I mean, if you did not do the project, you lose the grant.
But future, future will.
It's probably, I mean, I don't know. I don't think it would look favorable if the city applied for a CDVT grant, got funding, then chose not to do the project.
Who apply? The city? I don't think so. Go back to the box there.
Wouldn't you say?
Mr. Hall, do you have any comment?
Well, I think that, that the, the council needs to discuss it further, how we're going to move forward. There is a hundred thousand dollar match, and so we need to discuss where we're going to get the hundred thousand dollars from. My recommendation would be for the council to table this item for further discussion.
How will that jeopardize the project?
You have time as far as DCA's concerned. My biggest concern is, is that the city look for on sewer rehab projects. You're on the, you have a corrective action plan that was submitted to EPD for the overflows that the city's had, and in that corrective action plan, you state that you're doing improvements. And I'm concerned that it takes too long, and you're not showing that you're doing improvements. But, but, but a month, I mean, a month is not going to.
Exactly. We're not talking about delaying for a long time. We just collectively need to discuss how to move forward with the hundred thousand, but you also lift up the 12% match to the grant wire that we got to come up with also. Don't you have a 12% match on this for the grant wire?
We have our engineers, please.
Exactly. So that's.
Which is part of the, is part of the.
It's part of the.
So am I to assume that we have the same situation with the automated meter read project that we also?
Yeah, that one, you do have a matching, however, it came in on the. It was on the. Yes. So that one is a little bit different. You, you still have a matching amount that you have to match on the automatic meter reading also. So we, we need to discuss how to move forward. However, that one is on the GIFA loan also, so I think we can move forward with that one.
You want to just give us some details on, on that project, Mr. Hampton?
And you, you could award the other project for the, you know, if you've got a million dollars to shore up the city, you can award it contingent on spending that amount. But I know the council thus needs to discuss the match.
Correct.
The other project is the automated meter reading project. On May 16th, we opened bids on the meter reading project. We had two bids. Meter install group was the low bidder with a bid of $925,951.21. They were the apparent low bidder. GIFA, the city has a GIFA loan slash grant for construction that is a little over a million dollars. So there's, there's money set up for construction that will cover this deal for the meter install. And what this project will do is it will put in new meters for all the customers. There'll be an automated meter reading project so that the city can read the meters from city hall. You don't have to go out there and manually read the meters. And allow for a customer portal, if people want to check the visualization, logins, see how much water they use. But the biggest thing is it changes out the meters, you're going to get more efficient meters, you got to empty your water more actively, and it's going to save time on collecting that.
We'll be responsible for the meters.
Installation of the.
With the grant, yeah, with the grant money covering the meters.
The GIFA project will cover the meters.
And we don't have meter for gas.
We don't have meters, we didn't get any meters for gas, but this system is capable of time on gas meters.
I was told that it wasn't, because they tried to do it eight years ago. You got to walk by the water meter and go up and read the gas bill.
They have an automated system that can work on gas meters. But we didn't bid those out as part of this project, but it's compatible with gas. So that in the future, if you want to get an AMI gas register, you can put those on the gas meters and collect the data through your network. And this company is RG3, I think they've been to the council. They presented stuff over, over the years to the council.
Yeah, over eight years ago, I don't know.
But I would recommend the city enter an agreement on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. At this time, if there, are there any further questions or comments? I would like to ask for a motion to move forward with the automated meter read project. May I have a motion?
I think.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? I saw it. Mr. Rockwell, what's your vote?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Corr?
No.
No? And?
No.
No. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is the distilled spirit regulations. And with the sports bar ordinance.
Yes, at the last meeting, we discussed the addition of distilled spirits being allowed in Turner County, and we prepared an ordinance that will allow for additional licenses. One would be for on-premise consumption of distilled spirits, and another would be for packaged sales of distilled spirits with a limit of three licenses within the city limits. Inside the ordinance also is a definition of a sports bar, which is a bar that has multiple televisions in the area that shows live events of sports for at least 75% of the time that the business is open. And in this ordinance, it does allow for sports bars to, if you license them to serve distilled spirits up until 2:55 a.m., which is a cut off time under state law. And if there are any questions, I maintain those questions.
On the, on the sports bar, that's a sports bar ingredient, so they, they got to stop serving food also at the same time?
No, but under state law, you have to cut off alcohol at 2:55. Is there any indication that it will be like a 24-hour type restaurant or? Well, I can adjust that portion of it if it wants to stay open beyond 3 o'clock. Under our current ordinance, after the last drink is served, I believe we can stay open for another hour. But I wasn't anticipating being open basically 24 hours or up until the early morning hours. But, but we can make those changes if that's the question.
Under our current ordinance, it says once the last liquor or the alcoholic beverage is able to be served, they have an hour to shut down, which means they have to have all their stuff done and out the door within an hour of the last drink to be served. So 2:55, 3:55 a.m., they have to be completely closed, registered, out, everything. That's what our ordinance is written.
Got you. I just know that, I just know I had talked to the owner, Lydie. She was telling me about, I'm going to be serving the food, people order food, and you're trying to get the last food out and cook all the orders, something like that.
That would be something that we would have to adjust if that's what the council wanted was to allow for the establishment to remain open even after the last call was made.
Well, I know the inside will be closed, but I know they got a window up, and they'll be serving that on a, you can get your, pick your food up on the outside. The door will be closed at like 3:55, but then you could, somebody might be stealing parking lot, getting their food through a window.
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. Okay, we, we passed an ordinance for allowing distilled spirits, correct?
But this will allow distilled spirits.
But this, this seems to me that it's like two ordinances in one that it covers distilled spirits and sports bars, and I'm thinking we need a distilled spirits ordinance and a sports bar ordinance, and that's.
Well, we can separate it. Originally, I, I had planned to separate it, but when I looked at the way our ordinance, our alcohol ordinance is written, essentially all we're doing was adding a different type of license that was available to businesses in the city of Ashburn. So we weren't creating anything new other than a different type of license, and we just added a definition of sports bar. So I can go back and make it.
This exhibit A is basically the distilled spirits part of the ordinance.
That is the whole licensing portion of the ordinance. Because the renumbering, it was going to require renumbering, I just put it all together so when it gets sent to MUNICODE that the cross references would align together. Because I would have to add, I had to add certain provisions in there. And when it gets sent to MUNICODE, sometimes if you add a number, it throws off the entire cross references.
But this is very, this is just standard.
That's standard. It's only, I believe, section two and section three are the only substantial changes is where it talks about the classification of license, and it adds that still spirits thing, which, but because it added a whole section two and you didn't throw the number in those for cross reference purposes, I couldn't just throw it in.
Okay, I understand. I just, I just was not real.
I put the motion on the floor to go ahead and vote for it. You done did all that work.
Yes, sir.
Like these.
Now, I was just going to say, the difference here, one of them is distilled spirits for restaurants, and the other one is distilled spirits for sports bars. That's the difference.
Thank you. Any other discussion, comments? Did I hear a motion to approve this ordinance?
Yes, you did.
Do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Burgess, I'm assuming you want to talk about the caboose?
Yes. The last meeting, we put the caboose. We put it back. And you went and paid him. And I like to do one. We tabled it, and then you win.
I paid it. I did it. I paid it, I did it. But I'm going to reimburse the city through the downtown development authority.
But that wasn't your job to do that. And you keep doing this over and over again.
Uh, Mr. Burgess.
Mrs. Sandra Long.
May I give you some of the history about the caboose?
It ain't got nothing to do with history. It's about what we agreed to do. The council made the decision, not Sandra Long.
No, the decision wasn't made, it was tabled.
The decision was made to table, but then you went on and took upon yourself to go ahead and pay it after we tabled it. That wasn't right, Sandra Long. I'm not arguing, I'm not fussing. But right is right. You wanna do stuff in order, let's do it in order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is scheduling of a town hall meeting. I, I'm not familiar. Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, back to the train. I wanna make a motion, put a motion on the floor to move the train to the park, what we decided to do at first.
Mr. Burgess, the caboose doesn't belong to the city.
It doesn't.
It was brought down here through the Historic Preservation Commission. It is not on city property.
And that's why we paid, you paid fifteen hundred dollars, but we can move it on city property and we won't have to keep paying fifteen hundred dollars. We moved it one time, it costs four thousand dollars. We keep sitting over there on that lot after ten years, we've been under that three, four times.
And where do you want to move it?
You already know, stop playing games, Miss Long.
Where do you want to move the caboose?
Even told the guy, stop even checking on trying to get it moved. We gonna move it to the first park. So kids can enjoy it and get on it. Ain't nobody gonna let their kids cross, cross, uh, one twelve and forty-one right now? What, sit there now? But if they're over there at the park, even Mr. Baker said it was a good idea.
The, uh, that park belongs to the development authority and I do not believe that that board wants the caboose.
You don't even have a board, Sandra Long. You said the mayor don't even have a board.
Okay, Mr. Burgess, I'm gonna call you out of order because this is not gonna be discussed any further.
You can call a lot of order. I don't know what they gonna do. Can't make me hush. Thank you. I'm elected official, just like you are. Just like you signed those checks and they're supposed to do it. On the same way, we both elected officials. So I put a motion on the floor to move the train.
You don't have the authority to do that, Mr. Burgess.
Nor do you. You didn't have authority.
This council does not have the authority to do that.
You trying to break the city and resign. We paying out more money going out the city account than coming in right now. And everybody in here know, if you got more money going out than coming in, you know what gonna happen. And I'm not trying to disrespect the mayor, I'm just trying to say about the city.
Mr. Mayor.
And you can put your hand up, ain't no, Mr. Mayor. No, all she gotta do is call the board on the floor. That's her job to call the board on the floor. That's her job to call the board on the floor. City going broke, she getting sixty thousand dollars, did it the same way. And she don't supposed to do then over thirty thousand dollars. She just keep doing it and doing it and doing it.
Mr. Burgess, I don't control finances, city manager.
You sign off on it. So why are you signing off on it if you don't control it? Ain't nobody in here slow. You sign off on it. Can't no council can sign off on it. The mayor sign off on it.
Mr. Burgess has made a motion that we move the caboose probably at the cost of between eight and ten thousand dollars.
Burgess, Mr. Burgess, how much does it cost to move the train? You talk to the guy, please, sir.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
It was four thousand dollars, for the record.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
It's not about, I don't think it's about train actually moving, it's more undermining council. As we, as collateral to tables, just maybe sitting to tables, collateral to later date. And he, he going by, went ahead, paid the bill without us, in us knowing. So it's about undermining, I mean disrespect of the whole situation. I mean, it's not a big deal where it located to me, but at this point, you undermining what the city council, city council may.
It seems to be apparent.
But we never voted on it.
We tabled it.
We tabled it.
And please, please don't talk to me about disrespect. Please. I've had nothing but disrespect for the last five months.
It's not disrespect. You just wanna do what you wanna do. And I'm calling you out on it, so now you wanna say I'm disrespecting you. I haven't disrespect you now, time of here. I'm just telling you what it is. That's not disrespect.
Mr. Burgess has made a motion. Is there a second? Motion dies for the last of a second. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is collided properties. I'm not sure who asked.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, these first two properties, I just basically wanna call it a hypocrisy on the city park. This is a city-owned property. So basically what I'm saying is, before we can hold anybody accountable for adhering to our rules and regulations, I think we need to be applying to our own. So that's the city as a whole, and then it trip it down to us as an individual, the city-owned council. I mean, some of my council colleagues might say we're bosses, so me personally, I think we're leaders. For the most part, bosses pretty much create chaos. Leaders create conflict, so I think we should be by example for, from the city's side and then the individual. Early in the year, we had people to petition, uh, sign up for a new solid land property, saying that it was a brand property, factor down, have to hold that neighborhood. And downtown been looking like this for at least, I say about thirty years at most, but at least, I'm sorry. So no one petitioned to sign petitions for way downtown. So, um, Ashley can kind of speak on this. What's, what attracts business to you? Is, um, I think it's infrastructure, I mean, how downtown would work?
Downtown is the heart of your community and we look like we got heart of these.
Right, 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 right. So that now for me, another one stepped up, you know, sign petition on that. And also going forward, what, what can we do to replicate the property? I think it was, uh, two thousand and eighty-two.
There are only thirty-one dollars a year in Turner County. You can get that thirty-one dollar subscription anywhere in the world with our online subscription service. Just visit www.wiregrassfarmer.com.
This is telling counties to establish a tax incentive program to encourage property owners to mediate or redevelop black properties. Black tax, but it's actually called the Community Redevelopment Tax Incentive Program, where we can pretty much increase the taxes on these properties. Uh, and then they don't actually remediate or redevelop, and then we can decrease the taxes. So I don't know why that was intended. So, I mean, you're on the board with the downtown building. Do you have a plan for these properties? I can tell. So with Mr. Moore, um, can we draft up an emergency order to do anything possible to get any property rectified?
Do we have a list of, I guess, the top, troubled areas?
I mean, downtown, and funk load is in there also. I mean, on the west, west, west Washington. And I'm not coming at the tenants, I wanna come at the people actually owning the properties. It's T and L rooms. So these are, these are like black properties. We don't have a black property. This is not any bank-owned property, private-owned property. In particular, Mr. David Huggs, he owns those properties. So if we can draft up an emergency order and try to get these property rectified ASAP.
Yes, if we can get on that.
So we have a black ordinance, the park city manager implemented it. Um, it has the same things that you're talking about. Um, once we go through, we send them a letter, we tell them that they need to fix it. Uh, we can take it back through our court system and we can actually raise their taxes on there up to, I wanna say it's like three, seven, seven hundred percent. And then if they come in and they put, it depends on how much money they put into the property, then we can actually give them a tax break back down. And so we already have that and so, uh, Mr. Spencer Wynn, which is doing our compliance, starting some of those, um, to be done, but there is a process to it. So we have to get it through, we have to get it through our court system.
I was just about to say, I can contact a clerk in this court and see what petition I already pending and see what properties need to be, get on the list or get served, ledger and plank to get.
But right, right now, some of those property owners have already been served with the letter. Spencer has already identified one in particular, the one you just, was on the screen. He's already identified the property owner and has made several attempts to make contact with him. However, he's not answering, so we, we're moving to the next phase, which is to get through the court system to actually get this person into, uh, or try to get these properties in compliance. And one of the things, we were with a property owner yesterday who owns property downtown. And he was complaining that the two properties adjacent to his, with water was running through those and prohibiting him from utilizing his property. So there is an issue there. We aren't working on it. However, like the chief says, that isn't a slow process, but we are. But, but, you know, the ones that, that the city owned, we could just send, send our people over to clean it up.
Yeah, start with us, because I, I don't want them in there that we not know what we supposed to be doing.
Unacceptable. We should send our street department over immediately and start the process of cleaning all the properties up.
Can we just get the slow process, just go straight to the courts?
I can. The process we've used before is condemning the property.
And that's through the court.
And through the courts, and it takes a little time, but then it'll come on, it'll be on the city's expense to just tear the property down, if that's how we do it. Am I, am I?
I think that's the process, but what happened is that you're despised when you become the owner of the property.
Right. And that's, that's a big problem too, is most of these properties, especially downtown, that we're going to, as soon as we make contact with them, they go, hey, y'all can have it. And so they wanna put the, the, you know, the stuff on us for us to do. And so the process is, we, we notify them, they have thirty days to respond. If they don't respond within that thirty days, then we give them another thirty days to either do something or forfeit the property or whatever they gonna do, then we take them into court. So you're, by the end of it, you're talking ninety days from start to finish, just trying to get it through the court, or trying to get it to the court.
And this is the thing that I was like about that. The caboose place, we tore it down. We had more money in that bill tearing the house down than what we sold the property for. And the city ain't in the business of selling land. And we gonna go to the depot and I look at it like this. God forbid, if somebody, parents leave them a house. They may not have the money to fix, we in Ashburn, Georgia. Everybody ain't got no money like that. If somebody's parents leave them a house, it boarded up like it's supposed to be, they may not have the money to fix it right then. Everybody, they talking like they rich in here. It ain't like that in Ashburn, Georgia. Ain't no jobs, nothing. So if it's abandoned house, be boarded up, you can't just make them people tear their house down and then go up eight hundred percent on taxes?
So you suggest leaving downtown like it is and we don't get no benefit?
No, no, I'm not talking about downtown. I'm talking about residential.
Downtown residential.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Downtown at the mall.
Yeah, that one I'm talking about. When Perry said that, that made me think of the houses. Cause actually, they came at me with a letter with one of my houses that I just bought.
But we still have to be in compliance as well.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you one hundred percent, Mr. Schiff.
Councilboard, I'm really, I'm gonna tell you that if we're gonna enforce policies, we first have to adhere to the policies that we all adopted. And, and so no, we're not in the market of taking property. But you all adopt policies, uh, in order to make the city better. So all of us, including everybody, we have to adhere to these policies. So no, you're right, we're not in the market to, um, take property. We don't want that property. You made a very valid point. If you have more money in taking it down. But the bottom line is, when you look at your downtown, what you can attract to downtown is minimal of the cost that it will take to take that building down. So if we can, if we take that building down and we can get a business into downtown, that's a plus for the city. So that's why we need to, we really need to, um, address that. And so yes, that process is through the court and we may in the end own the property. The advantage to that is, is that we will have it cleaned up to make our city more attractive to the visitors.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion on that, we'll move on to the, uh, next item. Scheduling of a town hall meeting. And I, I will admit, several months ago, I brought this up. One of, one of our meetings got out of hand.
The January meeting.
And, uh, the city, then city manager said that we had to do certain things. We had to get facilitator and we had to have moderators and we had to do this and that and the other. So the town hall meeting never came about. But we can bring it back to the table and we can figure out a way to do it, if that's what y'all want.
Yes, ma'am. Me personally, I wanna have one, um, at least two times a year. Um, I think we just six months, so we can have it at the end of the month.
I don't know, because there are a lot, there are certain things that we have to comply with before we can do that.
Let, let me research that. I know that we have to have a facilitator. That we, we have to have someone to sit in the town hall who will accept precautions. We might answer it, but we have to have a facilitator. There is security issues too. And then we have to be mindful of how many people we could actually get into here. We wanna make sure, well, I wanna make sure we cover everything, uh, with this. So if you give me thirty days, I'll get back with the council at our next meeting with the guidelines of how we can make this happen.
Is that okay?
Uh, I guess.
You'll do the thing.
Do you want it early or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have to, I have to, that's what I said.
Okay, we will do.
Next item on the agenda, we have discussed this before, is speed bumps. I'm not sure who requested that this be on the agenda.
I, I did, um. Okay, a lot of people coming here about speed bumps, so I don't, we can go ahead. Now, this is where I'm tired of not having things, it's on my tragedy happen. So, um, we can't get this going. Actually, this is on South Main. I don't know the address precisely, but South Main. A resident's name, he's saying maybe it's speed bump, but they have to, it's not that point. I think we spoke on it for Carlos, and you know, having a tragedy happen on Carlos.
Right, so you got the tension on Lee Street, but nobody's leaving.
Yeah.
They didn't respond to the meeting.
I, I live on Lee Street. And, uh, I, I promised to, to tell the council, I was actually on council. But Lee Street is one of the highly populated area. It writes constantly. I mean, I had to leave them at thirty-five. And hey, just like today, two cars came up past five. And I'm so afraid that if a car leave that street, I don't have time to move my vehicle or move, cause my porch is so big. And I should not have to be afraid of somebody going up, and these are not just kids. These are adults also, going up and down the road. And we have all these side streets. Barbara, Hammer, Kennedy, Knight, Peach, Walnut, Orange. So we have sixty-seven side streets where kids come, all they go, and cars track, they don't stop. They don't stop. And that's one thing that I really would like the council to really like about.
Well, I think it's something that's gonna require some research, uh, as far as what, what, what kind of streets can you put it on? Can, can it be a neighborhood street? Can it be a, a, a well-traveled busy street? well-traveled busy street, I don't think it could be a state road or anything like that.
I think we need to let the chief of police back here.
So anything on the city streets, that we, city, city owned streets, we can do kind of, more or less what, what we wanna do, if there's a reason to do it. State routes, of course, have to have DOT involved, that's the permits, there has to be, uh, all kinds of stuff that we have to do, liability forms, stuff like that. Uh, but on the small streets in the side of city, you know, of course, we can open and close them, we can put speed bumps. Um, Lee Street is really bad, we do, we've been called over several times about racing up and down Lee Street, um, you know, things to that nature, so. Uh, I was just looking up on my phone, you can get these little speed bumps, just like they did over in Orchard Hill, um, they put the, I don't know if y'all been over in Orchard Hill, they put some speed bumps over there. Um, it really slowed down traffic over there, um, you get them for about eighty bucks a piece, um, so they're not real expensive, uh, I think our public's working right there, and they put the ones over in Orchard Hill, I believe, so they're not hard to put in.
Do you have a particular area of concern?
Yes ma'am, uh, South Main.
Old South Main?
One, right next to, we prepared it, we do, um, on, on face it, and right side, close to P K right.
Yeah, on that, pulls up on that. Yeah, the road was.
The only concern as far as, I'm gonna speak for fire and EMS, along with police, if you put too many of them up there, it's gonna cause a problem with response time for emergency vehicles. I understand we got to do to provide the safety for the kids and all, but we also got to get there in a timely manner, in case for the emergency.
Well, it looks like it might take some research, but I think it's worth it, um, if we can get together and do that.
But in the meantime, let's just instruct our police chief to patrol these areas more heavily.
That's right.
We know that there's an issue there, so, listen, we want you to patrol the area, and curtail the street. If you do that, we don't have to have speed bumps, tickets will slow people down also.
T, is that how we get like, um, those, um, speed readers on some of these?
So there are some, I have a magazine in my office now, there are some that have, uh, a solar panel on there, and we can pull out, and, um, you could get a couple of them, I think, I think some of them are running about a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars. You can set up, kinda do a speed read, it doesn't, it doesn't issue tickets or anything like that, but it just kinda gives a read. But also, if you, I think the smart approach to it is, say South Lee or, or, or South Main, get some speed bumps and just see what it does.
But it's gotta be on a straightaway.
What now?
You wanna put speed bumps on a straightaway, that'll cause, Mr. How?
Yes, sir.
Speed bumps on a straightaway?
Well, I mean, you gotta think about what you're doing, uh, chief. Fire chief made a very valid point about your emergency vehicle, um, let's bear in mind that that fire truck going down Lee Street, it's carrying a thousand gallons of water. And he gotta get across that bump, which mean, everyone he gets to, he gotta stop, he literally gotta stop to get across. So, we may be fixing one issue, we're creating another, because if your house is burning, or if, if you need an ambulance, you don't wanna hear, I had to stop there with speed bump before I got to your house. So let's just bear in mind that, which is why I said, let's get the police, the police chief to patrol this area, and, and we know that we're gonna get complaints about the police department being on that side of town too much, but the bottom line is, if one person get killed, we gotta have a whole lot more complaints than that. And, and so, let's do our due diligence with the speed bumps, yes, we can probably research it to see, but in the meantime, we put pressure on the police chief to do something about this, and people racing, or driving, stealing, let's, let's know all the street women on, uh, in their cage, on Lee Street, if it's thirty-five, let's, let's move it down to twenty-five.
You put that before them?
Yes, the, I mean, those are, those are things we can put in place to slow the traffic down, which give the police department more leverage to, to cite people who are racing, or driving uncontrollably on these roads. We can do that, we can put that in place, but also research the speed bumps, but it is not a good idea to put it on a straightway like that.
And I would get those signs.
So, so let me ask you this, the same ticket riding process that you have in the school zone, is, is that something we can put on these streets?
There, there is, there, there's a thing out there called Flop Safety, and it's a, it's a camera, it's solar powered, you can bring it in, um, and it'll do tag reading, it will do speed, it will do face recognition, stuff like that. It's a little bit pricey, but, I mean, it, it will, if you, if you really have a problem area, you can get it, you set a camera out there, and it'll catch everything that comes by.
Well, if you got a citizen who's scared to walk out of his house, to move his vehicle, because people are racing on the road, that constitutes a problem. And that constitutes a problem, so, in this case, we probably should be researching every avenue to try to curtail that, that problem.
I'll get you some of that.
Okay, we will do.
Thank you, thank y'all. Uh, the next item on the agenda is purchasing a turnout gear for fire department.
If, if I can say, can I just?
Sure.
Okay, so, we, we're at a point, and I have, uh, the fire chief here to answer any questions of that, but, but he is, he's at a point where this turnout gear is out of date, which puts us in a huge liability of, of our fire department, our firing, who are entering into houses, and this turnout gear, and he will echo what I'm saying, this gear, somebody get hurt with this barrel, it creates a problem for the city. So this is a must, we need to make this purchase, to get this turnout gear for the fire department, so they will be in, in compliance. Um, I, I understand our situation, but this is a must, we need to find a way to get this twenty-five thousand to, uh, purchase this turnout gear. But he can answer any questions that you all may have concerning it.
How many you got, Tom, that needs a turnout gear, Danny?
Seven.
Question different? What's the difference in turnout gear, you giving the turnout gear you already have?
The turnout gear that we have, that my part-time guys have at work force, is over ten years old, and per NFPA and the codes for turnout gear.
So the code change, what you saying?
No, no, this has always been in effect. Uh, structured firefighting assemblies and assembly elements, which is turnout gear, shall be retired in accordance with ten dash two dash one, or ten dash two dash two, no more than ten years from the date assembled, or the elements were manufactured, so it's got a little thing in it when it's manufactured, ten years from that date, that gear's not good no more. Now, I've got myself, I've got a set of gear at home, that I've had ever since I started here in nineteen eighty-nine. Still looks brand new, but it was gifted, it's a gift, but even though it looks, it still looks good, if I go in and fire with it, and you say, it burns through, so make it burn. Turnout gear companies, you're not gonna be liable for, because it's over ten years. We as a city are gonna be liable for it getting burned. As long as it's in date, they have a malfunction, it's on the turnout gear, they will not see.
So, when you came up to the point just a while ago, you said the part-time guys don't have one, but all your full-time guys?
The full-time guy, their gear is three years old, it's three years old, so we still got seven years on it.
Gotcha.
Part-timers, we had to break up some of them, the new hire that I got in school right now, he's in his last week of school, ten weeks. This is his last week of graduate school, I'm getting four second one for his graduation. When he come home Friday, come off, he said, I gotta have more pants. You got a pair of pants like a three-years-old from, up there in the class, crawling and all, he's got two holes in each knee, they would not, they didn't use them at the state fire academy. So I did actually go to the chem room, and borrowed some turnout gear that was in date, so he finished his class, cause he was gonna get kicked out because he didn't have gear for the last week. Or actually, for Tuesday, go ahead, twenty-four hour shift, and pull Tuesday get there, and I did twenty-four hours, twenty-two hours of firefighting fire.
Chief, on an average, how many volunteer farmers you have to respond to a fire?
We average, on a structured fire, we'll average ten to eleven.
And they're all from the city?
The city and county has the same volunteers.
So they have the turnout, the volunteer farmers have it from the county?
Just recently, bought every volunteer county, blue turnout gear.
Oh, so why are you asking us to buy something that they already have?
Part-time, they have.
You just told me that all of, you have the same volunteer farmers that the county has? And so I just asked you, for an average, how many responders to a fire for the city?
Structured fire, we have, hopefully, ten to eleven.
So every one of them already have a turnout gear, because they got it from the county?
Not necessarily.
That's what you just said.
Back to the beginning, back to the top of the beginning.
Okay, the county has bought all the county volunteer fire, uh, turnout gear.
And you said?
And we have the same volunteers, volunteers, please, sir, I'm trying to get this gear
For part-time.
For the part-time and full-time guys that need it.
Okay.
That's why I'm trying to get, that's why I'm wanting to ask you for seven, instead of twenty-seven, I'm just asking for seven.
We got twenty-seven fires?
All in here, probably.
And we had, how many fires, are you, three?
This ain't supermobil, man.
I have a motion in a second to purchase the turnout gear for fire and fire department, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for that, we appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Middlebrooks, are you in the audience? Mr. Middlebrooks, Brooks has requested a speaker appearance, uh, Mr. Middlebrooks, you will have five minutes, likely will not be any response, but we will listen.
I usually get four to five minutes, but, uh. Six forty-two West Madison Avenue, you like the weed with the evidence, convenience store. Six forty-two West Madison Avenue, it's a, uh, convenience store in between the two fire, and and it's not a convenience store, it's a drug store, they sell crack, flock of weed constantly, seven days a week on there. I live behind that store, and I've been there four years, and the four years that I've been there, it's nothing but drugs and selling at that store. So this young man here come by, and call me, come by my house and talk about this. So he come by there, looking at the camera and stuff, and I take, point out, the drug dealer up there now, so they gets, looks at the camera, and you know, maybe they gonna go up into the store and talk to him about it, and, uh, so we talked about it, and, uh, I was telling the drug was illegal. He admitted the drug is illegal, selling the drugs and smoking the drugs out in the parking lot is illegal, they does it all the day, every day, all the time. So, he said, uh, I'm gonna go up there and talk to him. So I said, I need a number to call somebody when this stuff get crazy up here, so he give me his number. That evening, I come back home from work, he was not smoking again in the parking lot. So I called this gentleman, and told him what was going on over there, he told me he was gonna send the police up there to the store. I'm sitting there looking at the camera, I see a police ride by the store. So if you told me you gonna send a police to the store, I'm expecting for a police to go to the store where they smoking marijuana at. I mean, I, I just said, man, he, he right with the same old stuff, man, so if the drug is illegal, he told me that, man, that regular store don't want them on the property. But if any drug is illegal, you got all the prop cause to go anywhere, and charge anybody for illegal drugs. I don't know why, he saying ain't nothing he can do about it. So he telling me, as well as they sell drugs all day long up there, smoking marijuana in the parking lot all day long, and ain't nothing he, the police can do about it. Now, that ain't the law, and I know it ain't the law. So I wanna know why he telling me that a lie, that he, he was sending the police to the store, and the police ride by the store, and, and just kept going. And, uh, talk down, I was over there to keep the crew over there, he come from the street, all that talking to me about that, and I come out of house, I said, he ain't come out of house. I said, but he told me a lie, he was gonna send a police to the store, and he didn't send him to the store. He said, well, I'll come out there with him, and we'll talk about it, that never happened, so. I mean, I, I mean, it ain't nobody, I'm dealing with, with this problem, that's, uh, real in this business. I, I, you know, I done tried everything I could do, not even to put a semi behind it, I think it got something to do with that, where he leave a tag on it, so try to block the camera for seeing what he doing. But this stuff go on every day, all day, drug being, so if they standing in front of that store, they selling drug. They smoking marijuana in the parking lot, all over the parking lot. I talked to Willie James Thomas, he on the lot beside that, empty lot, he told me, he done told that man a thousand times, if he see anybody on his property, he want him charged. Ain't nothing happened on that yet, so everything, we talked to that man about, he's not doing, I don't, I don't understand him, and, uh, I, I know. The law is, if any illegal drug being sold anywhere, you got a prop cause to go on that property and charge the people. But this man saying ain't nothing he can do about it. So he actually telling me that these people can set up there and sell drugs at this store, and smoking marijuana in this parking lot, all over the parking lot, and ain't nothing can be done about it.
Mr. Middlebrooks, I'm very, very sorry that you're having to deal with that.
Yeah.
I, I don't know the laws myself, I do think that there, if there is an investigation going on, we cannot comment about it in open meeting.
They not, they didn't got a investigation going, I was calling fifty thousand times, they don't even respond to your call, only time that man responded to my call, is I talked to Anna Hester, Ashman Bill's supplier. Then that's when they called me, that man, I called that place about fifty times, at twenty-three, twenty-three. Left my name, and nobody don't respond. Only time he responded, when Anna Hester done called, that's when he responded. He respond because come talking about, I'm on the children, he responded after Anna Hester he talked to, that's when that man responded to me. You know, it just don't make no sense, then when you talk to them, I mean, you got them, I don't understand what they doing, uh, they ride, but they won't go on the property. Them people out there smoking marijuana, you can smell it by riding down the road, they, they just, ride, 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 ride by, they won't even stop, I mean, it's unreal, man. I mean, them, them police ain't doing nothing. They getting a, drawing a big old check, and ain't doing nothing, man, that man right now, he wasn't a cliff. I'm serious, he wasn't a cliff, I mean, he, he doing nothing, and tell you a lie. Why they told me a lie, why did you tell me a lie, that people gonna send a police to the store? I'm not talking to you, uh. Okay, alright, okay, so if you, if you tell me a lie, you're telling these people a lie. I'm gonna leave it at that.
Mr. Mea Brooks. We really don't respond, but I'm gonna respond, I'm just.
Yeah, go ahead.
Give me outside information, uh, the city's in the county, if you can't get what you want out of here, you can't call the sheriff department, have them send you a sheriff there.
Man, I know people gotta come, you got more of the shafters in the. I will call the child, I'm telling you something, I've been here about four years, them people gotta come, wait for me, brother.
But they say Joe.
Yeah, you know how long it take for Rebecca, these people right here in town.
I got you.
I mean, you did it twelve, twelve minutes, you should be there, it take that man thirty minutes for that, that be done, smoked out, and done what they wanna do and gone. I better, I better have a man twelve minutes than thirty minutes, but, but, but you better have.
I got you, I understand.
Well, I want somebody to come away from Rebecca, when I need to leave people right here riding around in town, all that, about, uh, Circuit K High and stuff, that's what they do. All, all the other side of the grid, if I call and ask for a post-up, can I get a post-up over here, they won't even come post up, that's how scared they are. They won't even post up over there. This is our freedom, man, what the police is doing, man. I'm serious, man, it is unreal. It is unreal. And like I said, I got eight cameras, I got eleven cameras now. I got, I got three on that store. Now, they don't, he don't have a semi partner over there coming from Shawnee Hughes over there to try to block the camera, so they can sit out there and smoke the weed, sell the drugs. And that's what they doing now. So, now they get behind their semi truck line, and they still smoking the marijuana. So, when I smell it, I still call, but they don't, they don't do nothing, man. It's just unreal over there, that means, man.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much for being here and letting us know about your situation.
Well, what you gonna do about it?
I can't tell you that.
Well, who you gonna tell?
I don't, I can't answer your question.
You can't answer my question? You ain't gonna tell nobody? That's why I want that coming up. I ain't have a minute coming up in the question.
At this moment, we are going, I'm going to execute. I am going to ask for a motion to go into executive session. I have a motion, and a second.
The Wiregrass Farmer, Turner County's newspaper. We do more than tell you the news. We explain to you what the news means. We tell you how it's going to affect you and what you should expect. You can watch our videos for free, but if you want in-depth analysis, The Wiregrass Farmer. Subscriptions are only thirty-one dollars a year in Turner County. You can get that thirty-one dollar subscription anywhere in the world with our online subscription service. Just visit www.wiregrassfarmer.com.